To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 30th, 2015 County Commission meeting. And remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. We'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings of 6/23/2015 and the joint city of Sioux Falls County Commission meetings of 6/23/2015. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $539,434.10. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second. Any comments? Commissioner Burr.
Today's bills include $175,000 passed through to 9/11. And we also had five indigent funerals in today's bills.
So what? Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four are reports that there are none. Item number five is personnel action. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Move approval of routine action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is a special commission action for promotion. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. This is a request coming from JDC to change Melissa Buffalo's classification from a community supervision monitor to a newly created position of juvenile cultural and equality coordinator. I just wanted to clarify that this is being done with an existing FTE. And Jamie Gravitt is here to explain the request further if you have questions.
Okay. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of JDC. This position was originally a grant-funded position through Volunteers of America. We felt it was an important position to carry on. We initially put it as part of the duties of a community supervision monitor. We found that it entailed much more activity than a part-time basis. So I'm requesting this position for full-time and to promote Melissa Buffalo because she's uniquely qualified. She was the person that held the grant position with Volunteers of America and she's been doing all the work to this point. In fact, she has already set the dates and has coordinated all the trainers for our summer series this summer, which will be on July 10th, July 24th, and August 7th here in this building. Those are morning serieses that have to do with issues pertaining to children of color that we're dealing with. And they're for service providers and community members. So that's just one of the things that she's doing on top of community supervision at this point.
Any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Bender.
Chairman. Jamie, I just want to make clear, she's already a full-time position. All we're doing is changing her pay grade, correct?
Correct. And it'll be a new job description and job title.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice that the South Dakota State Historical Society has approved the nomination of Terrace Park and Japanese Gardens Sioux Falls, Minnehaw County to the National Registry of Historical Places. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish notice of the hearing at a joint meeting of the Del Rapid City Council and the Minnehaw County Commission at 9:00 a.m. on July 21st, 2015 to consider amendments to the 2004 revised joint zoning ordinance for the city of Del Rapids and Minnehaw County.
Make a motion to authorize publication.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is petition for compromise lien, and there are none. Next one is opportunity for public comment. This is the time if you have something that is not on the agenda that you would like to comment about. Taking none, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider an appeal of a decision of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 15-29 to allow a Class C CAFO for 499 animal units on the property legally described as tract 2, except tract A and B, and except a 100-foot strip lying adjacent to tract A. Anderson's Edition North One Half, Section 10, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, located approximately three miles north of Brandon and a half mile west of South Dakota Highway 11, deferred from June 16th. Kevin Hookman. And what we're going to do is Kevin's going to give us a staff report on kind of an overview of where we were because we've heard all this information before. Then we will go to the proponents if there's any new information that has evolved since the last meeting. And then we'll give the opponents an opportunity to bring any new information and then the proponent can come back with a comment. And then we'll go to staff. Right, go to commission. Okay, Kevin.
Kevin Hookman, Planning Department. As you know, this item has been before you a couple of weeks ago. And at that meeting, there was a discussion about the people who appealed and some things that they were worried about. It was brought up that it was wanted, that perhaps that the applicant and the appealers meet together and see if they can work something out to make this application work for everybody involved. The applicant did do just that, that he contacted many of the neighbors and all of the people who appealed. And you received that contact list and who is contacted and how. And they met and they agreed upon several conditions that could be placed upon the application by you. When they met, some of these conditions included that some changes to the site plan. And I will actually bring up a map for you on the overhead. Part of the changes would be that the facility be located to the south of the trees. At the last county commission meeting, it was presented the building was south of the trees and the applicant's building was within the setbacks of the nearest house.
Can you use the pointer while you're talking to? Or you have, oh, I'm sorry, it's on the overhead. All right.
So, and now he has moved the building both to the south of the trees and outside of the setbacks of the nearest houses with this newest site plan. At the meeting, they also discussed that the existing tree grove that is located here, that existing tree grove, that the majority of the trees be maintained while the new trees, the tree grove grows until the new trees become established and then you can remove them from the new trees. Is also, they wanted that the manure storage facility be covered and any water from the manure will be retained in the storage facility. And that the cattle be kept inside the building, the barn, within the CAFO building, except for temporarily removing the cattle for 24-hour periods while the applicant is cleaning the facility. Other things that was discussed at the meeting included that any expansion be, require a conditional use permit, which is part of our ordinance already. So that would not be needed as a condition because it's already required by our ordinance. And then the final change would that, to the site plan, would that they would add trees on the west, north, and at least three-quarters of the east side of the facility. And that is reflected in this new site plan on the overhead. And these trees, and another condition is set to be planted to the standards of the Minnehaw County Conservation Standards. So that would be the new information that was, has been brought up since. And I can let the applicant and the appealers talk a little bit about their meeting as well. But for now, I will read the conditions that was approved by the planning commission that you will need to approve or amend with the approve of this permit. Number one, the facility shall be limited to 499 animal units in size. Two, copies of the nutrient management plans shall be approved and filed with the Minnehaw County Planning Department on an annual basis. Three, shelter belt trees shall be planted as proposed on the site plan. In addition, shelter belt trees shall be placed in an approved locations around manure containment facility. Any dead trees shall be replaced within one season. Four, shelter belt trees shall be planted utilizing a minimum Minnehaw County Conservation District standards. Five, an address sign must be purchased at the planning department and placed at the driveway of the facility. Six, manure storage facility must be in conformance with South Dakota Department Environment and Natural Resources Design Standards for any newly constructed waste containment facility. A registered professional engineer shall certify the planned specifications and the construction of the facility. Seven, the facility shall conform to any submitted site plans. Any minor changes may be approved by the staff of Minnehaw County Planning Department. Major changes will be required and amendment to this permit in a public hearing. Eight, a rendering service must be used to pick up and remove dead animals from the property. Nine, operations shall maintain fly control as to not become a nuisance for neighbors. Ten, a building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. Eleven, that a planning and zoning department reserves a right to enter and inspect the dairy CAFO at any time after notice of the owner, notice to the owner, to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval on Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. And 12, the required waivers of the property owners to the two dwellings to the south shall be obtained prior to the issuance of the building permit. And I might add that 12, because he is outside of the setbacks, should be removed as part of the conditions if we were to move forward.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Kevin? Commissioner Burr.
So Kevin, although the neighbors suggested a covered lagoon, that's not one of the conditions, is that right?
No, the covered facility is not one of the conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any new, any other questions? Is there any new information from the proponents? Is there any new information from the opponents? Just identify yourself and your address, please.
Gary Pop, 48132, 257th Street, Garrettson. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Sunbold for getting us together, as we discussed at the last meeting two weeks ago. Thought it was very well and very helpful for the neighbors to get together and talk about this. And appreciate a lot of the items that were agreed upon at that meeting. If I could, Mr. Barth just asked about the manure storage not being a condition, but that is what we're asking be added. And then the only other item that I wanted to mention was that an amendment was agreed upon to add, or I'm sorry, amend number three of the conditions, that the shelter belt trees shall be planted as proposed on the site plan. We want to add to the west, north, and at least three-quarters of the east side of the facility.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those were agreed upon by the applicant? Yeah. Did you, that was a yes. Are there any questions for the applicant? Did the applicant have any other comments?
Wyatt Sunbold, 1600 E Cedar Street, Brandon, South Dakota. I just wanted to say that I'm all for everything that the neighbors brought forward at that meeting. I felt that we could agree upon everything and it really nicely mattered. And it's good to get everything talked out, to see their opinions. And I have no problem with following the conditions that they have placed forward on this, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Burr.
Wyatt, so you don't have a problem with the idea of covering your lagoon? Isn't evaporation an integral part of removing that waste?
It's actually not a lagoon. It's a dry pack manure bed. And so it, it's basically just cornstalk bedding with straw with manure in it. And then it's piled up under roof until we spread it, broadcast it, and incorporate it into the soil.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Gerald has.
Oh, Gerald.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I have to tell you, for the way this process has gone and the way you handled yourself a couple of weeks ago with significant opposition and then had the ability to go back and create a mutual agreement, if you will, you ought to be pretty proud of the fact that you were able to pull all those together. But more importantly, I think, the way you personally handled it yourself, I think that was very complimentary to the process, frankly.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I want to follow, agree with what Gerald said. For future people that are going to do this, it's amazing what sitting down and discussing can do.
Additional comments? Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the commission for your consideration.
I move for approval with the stipulations. With the stipulations that have been agreed to on items one through 12, correct?
Removing item 12.
Removing item 12. And with the changes that were specified on the shelter belt in item number three.
Are those going to be added as a conditional use or condition? They will be added?
They would be added. And it would be item number, item one, the conditions that they requested would be, let's see, Kevin, you want to read the two? I think it's item number one on the bottom and item number three on the bottom that would be part of Commissioner Bennega's motion. I can read it too if you don't have it. As noted in submitted plan, the facility will be located on the south of the existing tree grove. Half or more of the existing tree grove to the north and the east of the building will remain intact until the planted shelter belt is well-established. Manure storage will be covered and any water from the manure will be retained in the storage facility. And cattle will be kept housed within the CAFO building except temporarily for 24-hour periods while the pens are being cleaned. And then the last one, number three, is the shelter belts shall be planted on, as proposed on the site plan, to the west, north, and at least three-quarters of the east of the facility. In addition, shelter belt trees shall be placed in an approved location around the manure containment facility. Any dead trees will be placed within one season. Is that your motion?
That's exactly what I answered.
Okay. We had a motion and a second from Commissioner Barth. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 11 is consider a recommendation for a bid award for the purchase of two truck bodies from the Minnehaw County Highway Department's. Bids were opened on June 24th, 2015. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. On June 24th, I believe was the date, we received two bids for the truck bodies to accompany our truck chassis that we recently purchased. We received two bids, one from Northern Truck, one from Custom Truck Equipment, both of Sioux Falls, or both have Sioux Falls locations. The low bid is Northern Truck at $158,908. And we requesting your approval of awarding the contract to Northern Truck.
Is there any questions for D.J.?
So move that we approve Northern Truck Equipment Bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider recommendation for bid award of Project MC 122BR-15, replacement of Structure 50-243-100, located on Highway 122, approximately one-quarter mile east of County Highway 121, for Minnehaw County Highway Department. Bids open June 24th, 2015. D.J. D.J.
Commissioners, we received three bids on this bid letting. The structure is on a county highway just south of Arrows Road, just east of the four 121 structures that we replaced within the last couple of years. The three bids that we received, the lowest was pram construction at $469, or $793.15 for the base bid. We did have an alternate bid on these, on this letting to add an option on the bridge deck. Their alternate bid was $489,000 approximately. Our budget for this project, I think, is around $469,000. And so we will not be awarding the alternate. And we're requesting approval to award the base bid to pram construction.
Any questions for D.J.?
Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
Just want to ask about that Z-bar stuff. What special qualities does it have that it might be considered to be used?
It's steel that's dipped in a metal. And so it's similar to a glazed steel. And so it's supposed to have a design life of, I think, over 100 years. And when we have issues with our decks, a lot of times it's from the reinforcing steel rusting. And this is supposed to eliminate that problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Oh, Commissioner Burr. Bennega, excuse me.
I guess my question would be, is the life expectancy is going to be from what? On the base bid to the alternate bid of 100 years, is the $29,000 a good investment?
The design right now is going to be about 75 years. And Z-bar is a relatively new product. And Z-bar is what we're calling it, but really it's just a galvanized steel that would be available from multiple different vendors. We just refer to it as Z-bar. It's not been around long enough to be proven to last 150 years. It very well could last 150 years. We're going to have deck issues with the concrete much sooner than that. And so we are making the weak point of the deck, the concrete, as opposed to the steel reinforcement. We estimate, we know from talking to the Z-bar reps that we should be paying about $19,000 for this alternate. The bidder was pretty upfront with us and honest with us. They did not get a price in time for the bid letting from the vendor. And so they threw a dollar amount, I think $29,000 or so, at the alternate bid. And we just decided that rather than pay the $29,000 they threw at it, that we would just wait until next time. We want to definitely try it, but we want to pay a fair price for it.
Okay. Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the base bid for pram construction. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is a briefing on the WH Lion's Fairground Facility Exterior Repairs Projects. No bids received by June 24th, 2015 deadline. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, County Commission Office. And we did have a bid opening scheduled last Wednesday, June 24th, for building repairs, for buildings out at the WH Lion Fairground related to hail damage received last year. And this, the damaging included roofs, siding, and flashing. And the buildings that were included that received damage were the Nordstrom Multipurpose Building, the Horticulture Building, Old McDonald's Farm, the Beef Barn, and the Dairy Barn. There were no bids received. And so we are looking for authorization to repost that notice to bidders. There was, I can tell you that the architectural firm, Perspective, that prepared the RFP on this, they did receive a emailed, very rough emailed item from one of the contractors that had reached out and inquired about the project with basically a dollar amount hand scribbled on it. I conferred with Kirsten Katmeyer, State Attorney's Office, that didn't meet any of the requirements for a formal bid. So that contractor will be notified that their submission did not conform at all, but that we are going to repost for bids. And maybe we'll have them come back and, as well as maybe some other contractors.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Bennega?
Robert, was there any comments from any of the contractors that didn't bid on why they didn't bid? Was there something in the specifications that made it almost impossible for them to submit a quote?
I was not down at the bid opening. I don't believe there was anybody in person. I don't think, I don't think we received any feedback. You know, I certainly will make a second reach out to Perspective and see if they got any other comments, any other feedback from contractors. If there's anything that, you know, they may want to look at that could, that was a red flag. Or if there was, then we would maybe look to bring that back to you and repost it in a more appropriate manner. But we have not heard that in any way.
I guess the issue would be as if they're too busy, frankly, to do this kind of a project currently and we ought to delay it? Or if it's something that the bid specifications were impossible to meet?
Yeah. If we can, we certainly will try and flush that out a little bit and get a read on that.
Commissioner Burr.
And Chair, the auditor's office opens these bids and the auditor's here. Maybe he had some feedback.
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Of course, there was no bidder. Darlene was going to do that. I was doing the highway ones. But I did have a chance to personally look this over, Commissioner Bennega. And my thoughts were, is there's a lot of different aspects to that job. There's a lot of oddball material. Some of them are older. There's a lot of liability as a builder with sealing that, those buildings back up. And it's a widespread, far-flung project, takes a lot of resources. And frankly, if I was a contractor out there with the climate that's building out there today, I probably wouldn't do this thing either. So that was, those are my thoughts.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
Are you aware of any serious problems on, you know, like leaky in the Nordstrom building or something like that?
No. My information from Larry Trainant's perspective is that these are repairs that need to be made, but there are no imminent issues with any of the.
And I'm guessing that the insurance company will pay.
Upon completion.
Replacement, the cost. Do you know what the difference between the replacement and the ACV would be? Where we could take the money and then they could fix this over a period of a couple of years as contractors have availability?
Well, I don't know about that. I know there, we do have a timeframe on the, this payment from the insurance company. We have this $56,635.38 that will be paid by the insurance company upon completion. That, with a timeframe for making these repairs. That timeframe has been extended once. It is, I believe it's into the November timeframe. So we're looking to get a bid here and get the repairs made.
But that's to get replacement cost.
Yeah.
Will they give us the ACV on it right away? And what's the difference? Because I had that issue and, you know, you want to have replacement cost. Well, I found out the difference between ACV and replacement is only about $250, $300. So I, you know, it's possible we can get the money now, put it aside, and then they could, they could fix the buildings over, when these guys are busy right now. And I think that's our problem, but.
Clearly not.
Why won't they give us a check right now for ACV? That's my question.
Okay. Well, and clearly there are a number of issues, having not received any bids on here. We need to take a close look at this and we will do that.
I'm wondering too, and maybe not, but maybe breaking them up if what some of Bob said was true. Maybe they just don't want to do every single project. Maybe you can break it into several smaller projects. I don't know if that'll make a difference. Somebody else smarter about that than me will understand that.
There's a number of questions that we can still ask and come back and see if there's something that we can make this more appealing to bidders.
Okay. We need a motion to approve bidding. Or do we want to just, what do you want to handle it?
I would just soon defer this.
Or do you want to break?
I'd move to defer this for 60 days and find out what we can find out.
60 days? Do we want to defer it 60 days? That's quite a while when we got a November deadline.
I really doubt whether you're going to get anybody right now anyway. This is the peak of their business season. Unless there's a critical problem of roof leakage or something that's going to create a better, a worse problem shortly, whether this is done now or done in the middle of summer, I don't know if it makes any difference. That's my opinion.
I just have a comment. We just need, the Auditor's Office needs authorization to publish a new notice to bidders. And by deferring it 60 days, can we bring that back before that if we have a new notice that's ready to publish? Or are we locked into that 60 days is my question. Kirsten?
Kirsten?
You'd have to take up the item again and take another binding vote to set aside the deferral, so.
It's just on the table now, right? Would be, I mean.
Yeah.
You can move it off the table.
Right, but if it passes, then it's deferred for 60 days unless you guys take it back up again and you can't touch it unless, unless somebody brought a motion to rescind the deferral, so to speak.
Okay. I only, right now I only have a motion. I don't have a second for a 60-day deferral. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of the second. Is there any other thoughts?
Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I think that there is an issue where the fair is coming up.
Yeah.
And obviously, we don't want cranes and tractors driving around in excess of the regular traffic. But, so I think there's some validity to Commissioner Kelly's thought there, but I think we should advertise it and, you know, put that in there that, you know, we want this done after the fair.
But don't you think that the Fair Board will make those decisions? I don't think that they're gonna, I don't know that we have to put that restriction on them. I think they'll make their own restrictions.
I don't know. Is that a restriction that the Fair Board would make or don't we, aren't we the responsible party?
The architect firm is going to charge, you know, as they do additional work, they're going to charge additional hours and-
Kirsten.
I don't know that anything changes, that's my only-
Kirsten has a comment.
They are renting your property and I think they have reasonable grounds to restrict activities upon it, including those for repairs that are disruptive to their operations. So I do think they could, they could tell the contractor, "Look, you can't be disruptive at that point of tenant activities out there." So they could put that on there. And if I might add, I don't exactly know from looking at our insurance coverage what the time considerations are for recovering the expanded value, whether it's actual cash value versus replacement costs and what those restrictions are. Without looking at that, I can't say and I don't know if Robert knows what that is either, but the longer you delay it out too, I think, I think that gets tricky. So I just advise you that, that many insurers require some sort of rectification in a reasonable amount of time.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to immediately request additional bids on this project.
There's a motion to let for bidding.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the Auditor's Office to publish notice to bidders. Is that what you want? Okay. Is that all right with everybody? I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Benega?
I guess if we didn't get bids the first time, why are we going to expect that we're going to get them the second time without changing the bid specifications at least? Everybody that would have bid on it is probably in the prime of their season right now, plus the fair, so why are we rebidding it with the same specifications and all the other stuff that will be potentially the same without even asking the architect on what could be done differently or contractors on why they didn't bid it? So I have a problem with just rebidding it the way it is, frankly.
I guess I was under the assumption that they would do that before we'd rebid. This just gives the authorization to the Auditor's Office to investigate that, but maybe not? Do we have tempo?
Don't assume anything.
I guess.
If you're just rebidding the same thing, you're going to get the same results.
Should we just defer for even a week and give Robert a chance to check into some of this?
Robert and the auditor.
Robert and the auditor.
I withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer action for two weeks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer for two weeks to give staff an opportunity to look in, further into the bidding process. Is that all right with everybody? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. You would have never thought that would have been the biggest item on our agenda today. Item number 14, Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Assignment Reports. Are there any reports? Item number 15 is new business. Is there any new business? Item number 16 is old business. Is there any old business? Lynn?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, Linda Young, Emergency Management. As you know, last week, the county was involved in some debris cleanup operations with, excuse me, with the community of Garrettson. And I just wanted to take the opportunity and update and brief the commission on those. I know that the sheriff was in here last week doing that, but I just want to follow up with that. So, and I do apologize, some of these are hard to see because my iPhone, I didn't follow the instructions and take them east to west, the north and south, so, or an operator. But on the morning of July 22nd, the Weather Service, or excuse me, Minnehaw County experienced a severe wind event. The Weather Service did later put out information that at the Garrettson area, that the surface winds were up to 100 miles an hour, which caused some extensive damage in the community of Garrettson. So entering, right away, entering the community of Garrettson, it was evident that there was structural damage. There was significant tree debris damage in and around the community. Hazardous materials, potential hazardous materials leaked. So about 6:15, members of the sheriff's office, myself and others, as you see there, the Garrettson Fire Department quickly gathered after all of the lifesaving emergencies were taken care of and developed a plan to get the community up and going. At the time of this meeting, we still had, most of the streets within the community of Garrettson were blocked. All of the power was out and there were several other issues that were coming up. So as you can see here, myself, my assistant Doug, the sheriff's office, and then members of the Garrettson Fire Department were making a plan on how we get their community back in order as a result of this incident. So this, right away here was, that picture was 7:15ish, 8 o'clock in the morning, so right away after the event happened. Some more damage here to the football complex. So significant, right away, I made a call to DJ and he authorized the use of county resources through the Highway Department, which we have done many other times. So their manager over that area, Roger Stanzel, got ahold of his crew and they were brought into the community about 7:30ish also, because they report to work in the summer at 7 o'clock, so they were able to mobilize their resources and bring them up. Members of the Garrettson leadership with the mayor's office and everything were, you know, said it was amazing to see the county was there right at 7:30. So that was something nice to see because at this point, many of the, many of the streets, most of the streets were still blocked with debris and there was lots of power down. Because of the power outage in the community and the availability of resources from XL Energy, we quickly mobilized to the southern half of the town because we didn't have those concerns there with power outages and started cleaning that up. And once again, you can kind of see your Highway Department with the tools that they have, we're really the only ones that could go in and do this. Here, a little later on, this was a Tuesday shot, you see members of the Highway Shop there with a skidder and a power pole working right along with XL to get the power back on for the community. That's one of the major things that we do is if you can be in your house as a victim of a storm damage and have those, you know, those things that we all rely on, power and water and everything, it makes much less of a need for other response in other areas as far as sheltering and things like that. So that's one of our main goals during all these times, to work with the power, get the utilities back up so people can remain home and help themselves. One of the other significant events that happened is at about 1 o'clock, there was a partial evacuation of the nursing home in Garrettson. They ended up moving about 12 residents out and that was as a result of power failure. They have a generator onboard the facility and that generator was running. However, it's not hooked up to all the critical systems so that some of the airflow systems in some of the areas were not hooked up. So a decision was made by the nursing administrator there that the best thing for some of their patients would be to move them to other facilities within the community that had space for them. So we did a partial evacuation until the power came back on and then they left those folks evacuated until the power grid, basically, we could guarantee with discussions with XL that it was up and up for good instead of having minor interruptions, because any of those interruptions with people that are on life sustaining equipment are difficult to manage. Once again, this is just representatives both there working, you know, everybody thinks it's easy to do and it's a lot easier if you're just tabletop it out during an exercise, but when you have to do it, there are different things. How long are these residents going to be out of their area? So, and then which ones are critical today as opposed to which ones might have been more difficult the next day? We did use the fire station as a feeding point for not only community volunteers, but getting people in and out. We had a wonderful support system from the community, brought in food both days, all of those things where the responders could do and operate safely. This is one of the reasons why, if you see that bent pole in the middle there, that's a 100-foot pole bent to the sideways, they're not meant to do that. So that's east of Garrettson. And that was why they were out of power so long is because they had some of those major feed lines coming in that were damaged. Oops, that's kind of the end that I have there, but what I wanted, I got my other sheet here, just a couple other things. You know, within the incident, there was a building collapse where a little girl had to be rescued out of, down power lines, debris removal. Once again, there was a partial evacuation of the nursing home, a couple different medical emergencies, some gas leaks, major events. Once again, the incident started at about 4:45 a.m. The county and everything after, and that's 4:45 a.m. is entering the county on the west side. The county sheriff's office and Emergency Management were all on scene shortly after 6:00 and then the county resources from the county highway department were there at about 7:30. At 1:00, there was a partial evacuation of Palisade Manor. At 5:00, we ended operations on the first day and to date, we've conducted four different, or three different operational periods. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday were all operational periods for the sheriff's office, the Highway Department with their resources and then my office. And then tomorrow, we've worked out a final cleanup day. The county highway crews will be back with their equipment and then we're also bringing in some other crews from the community of Valley Springs, Baltic, Brandon and Del Rapids will also be bringing some of their resources in to get that going. So agencies involved include the local agencies, of course, of the Garrettson Fire and Ambulances, City of Garrettson, Brandon Fire, Valley Springs Fire, the sheriff's office, my office, South Dakota Highway Patrol, the American Red Cross, the National Weather Service was out to do an assessment, Baltic Fire, MedStar Ambulances, the DOT, several volunteer agencies, and of course, much of the heavy lifting on the debris removal side was done by the county highway shops. So once again, those guys did a super job of coming, you know, right away, something that's out of their ordinary and something that really at the end of, at the end of either each operational period, we were able to see a lot of success. And most importantly, it's something that the community of Garrettson couldn't have done with themselves. We didn't really get power back or at least have the availability to get power back until around Tuesday midday by the time we got all that stuff in. So I just want to, you know, say thanks to all those folks for stepping up and helping your neighbor out in times of need. It's really a good thing to see that here in our community. It's something that we've done before and something I anticipate we'll do in the future. So I did want to mention Commissioner Kelly came up on Monday, just took a quick tour of the community, so he would be able to point anything out. And then as far as volume of debris, I know no one counted trucks that were moved, but there were several hundred trucks of debris moved and we've coordinated with a local company to come remove that debris later from the community of Garrettson. So be willing to answer any questions on any of the slides you saw or any of the other parts of the response that we had.
Okay. Any questions for Lynn?
Lynn, could you comment briefly on the problem that was caused by home generators?
Yeah. You know, as anything, if you hook your home up to a generator, because the power is out, there can be some electrical issues of back feeding that power system. One of the things, so if you're back feeding in, then when the crews come in to work on your system, it, you know, could go from your place to the next place and light up the electrical worker. So each and every house had to be, you know, basically identified, are you on power? Are you on XL power, you know, your own power or you're on generator power so that we could get some of those fixed. So it is a problem if you don't have a licensed electrical contractor hook that stuff up at the beginning and today's a good day for everyone to do that, just because you need to be prepared to be on your own, you know, hopefully for 72 hours after an event like this, so.
And ones that are hooked up by a licensed-
Yeah, somebody that knows what's doing.
They do not have a backfeed on those. Those ones are safe. It's just the little home ones that might cause some issues.
Yep. So if you have it, you know, professionally installed by a licensed electrician, it should be fine, but it's some of those other ones that can cause some difficulties when they go back to hook up the rest of the system, so. Once again, Garrettson, a couple of the other things, Garrettson is having a licensed arborist come in and decide which trees go and which don't. And the amount, if you think back to, you know, the ice storm we had in this community two years, the amount of debris was down, the amount of debris probably in the neighborhoods that were in Sioux Falls and compare that to the amount of debris that was down in some of the neighborhoods in Garrettson, in the Garrettson area was probably double. I mean, there was some, some large, large trees there that were down and we actually, we couldn't get through a large part of the neighborhood until probably Tuesday around 2:00 o'clock. So there were some neighborhoods that couldn't get your car out. Those things, along with those other issues, like I said, of, you know, potential hazardous materials, we had to work with the train because they wanted to get their stuff through. The elevator has basically, all of their storage has been removed because it was all damaged. So there's a lot of different things going on in the community last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the subsequent days, and they'll have a long recovery the next couple of years, so.
Lynn, were the surface, the surface winds 141 or were those the aloft winds?
But those are the aloft ones, 100, or 650 feet off the ground, according to the Weather Service, is about 100, excuse me, at 141, it's 650 feet off the ground and then the surface winds were approximately 100 miles an hour, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
So as, in that situation where you get a generator, go to Home Depot, bring one home and start it up, if you plugged your fridge directly into it, the generator, you'd be safe?
Yep. But there are some people that are doing some other not-so-safe things, plug it into the panel and multiple outlets to run multiple outlets in the house at the same time.
If you threw the main breaker, would that disconnect you from the exterior feed?
You know, not being an electrician, I think that's an electrical answer. At my house, it would be different than the other ones, just all depends. And some of these houses, you know, are older, so they have fuses, you know, still on electrical panels. So that's an each and every question and that's why we just recommend talking to electricians, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Lynn? I just think from, on behalf of the Minnehaw County Commissioners, a thank you to all the volunteers, the nonprofits and the staff and the departments from Minnehaw County that did help with this cleanup and we are very thankful and blessed that no one was injured in the cleanup or in the storm, which is pretty amazing.
Yep. So once again, this was, I hate to say if there's a perfect time for an incident, this was a perfect time. Everybody was sheltered in place at their own homes. There weren't any large incidents and, you know, the other good thing about the time of day is it gave us a full operational period to go in and do a lot of good work. And there was, like I said, all those agencies did a lot of the work or did most of the work. We just go in and help the community coordinate and it was certainly interesting to get to, or certainly, one of the things that I do is try to visit with our local officials- is try to visit with our local officials, Mayor Tim Mullin, their city finance officer. They were certainly doing their fair share of the work. And it really shows in their community, the swimming pools back open, they're having ballgames, all of those things that people want to need to do in government can help get those major thoroughfares opened in the time that they needed, so...
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Look for a motion for executive session to discuss personnel.
It's my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.